Consider the public for which this stands, one nation under God, in the global, liberating justice of our world.
Thank you guys for coming tonight. Martin, you're in the right office.
Mayor Nicholson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sanger.
Here.
Councilmember Durst.
Here.
Espinoza.
Here.
Martinez.
Here.
Smith. Wells.
Here.
Okay, we have a forum. We'll start out with citizens' participation. This is the time with anybody, if anybody in the audience would like to step up and speak for five minutes about something that is not on the agenda, please do so. Hey, go ahead and come on. Can you state your name for us?
Neil Martinez.
Okay.
It won't be too long here. About seven years ago, I had trouble with my sewer. And the city kept on saying it's on my side, my side. Well, I couldn't argue with it. So they said, I went ahead and got a sewer done. And it was about 2013. Eddie Archilena did it for me. Why he did, well, he did that, he did some backflows for me, so it wouldn't come into my basement. And since then, it hasn't had a lot of problems. But now, lately, two weeks ago, I got up in the morning, neighbors on each side of me, which would be, let me see, who they are. Right here, I got it. 307 and 218 Davis. Those are the two ones. The basement's flooded out. So they didn't have the back. One has a backflow. And since then, the one to the left, 304, doesn't have a backflow, and it's an old sewer. Now, I went downstairs just to talk to some people on their sewers. And Daven Capulis got a new one. Janelle E. Bell. And in fact, when she got her, she was in there three days. Just moved in three days, and her sewer went. Okay? Then 304 East Davis, an old one. 308's new. 303 East Davis. I'd like to get this on record, too, so I have this. So they came in, and the truck run. And there goes, so there goes the water and everything. Mine, I didn't check it. I checked it, but got the backflow, nothing come in my basement or nothing. Apparently, when it happened, the day after, my pipe wasn't completely full. At night, you know, it was plugged. So I was using my own water, showering bathrooms, and all of a sudden, my wife's taking a shower, I was downstairs, coming up through the floor, so I shut her down. And I had to wait till the next day. It was late. I was up till 11:30. I said, that's it. We don't use nothing. I went down, cousin, my cousin Eddie's got those balloons. Oh, I was gonna get his rotor ready. He goes, oh, don't use that, Neil. It's a brand new, it's dirty, a brand new one. You don't want to use that on yours. So fair enough. And he set me up a good system outside my yard, caps, just running in there. They're out, I'm good. But when it happened to me seven years ago, I didn't have a backflow. I had just remodeled my downstairs. Luckily, I had the insurance. Two weeks before this had happened, I got the insurance. And I'd already, it cost me $10,000. The carpet alone's six. So my insurance came in, gave me five. I tore it all up. I haven't put a new carpet since. I painted the floors, and I haven't had any problems. Now, here it comes again. And so they run up. City went, they got ahold of them, like the barry knows. They ran a camera through the sewer. And I got a call from, I talked to you, and I got a call that said that still, they're clean. Well, I have pictures on my phone. What came out of it? If anybody wants to see it. Buckets and buckets of oil. And it's coagulated. I don't know where it's coming from. If it's coming, I'm thinking, if it's coming from somebody's garage, they gotta be dumping a lot of it. And eventually plug that up before it went to our sewers, you'd think. So they told me on the city side that they're good. And I know that that pipe is, half of it's clay, and half of it's the new one. So I just need to, I really don't need an answer right now, but if you guys maybe think about it, city engineers, to stop this, I mean, I gotta pay insurance. My neighbor, before you bought this house, Gavin, they told him, you ought to get this extra insurance, because we heard you guys have sewer problems. Why should we have to pay? Why should we have to get new, you know, since then, six of the houses on Davis, right to the left, they got new sewers. You know, and I understand that it's an old, I think they're built in like 59 and 60s, right? And, right, mine could have been old. It is old. So I said, I'll go ahead and change it. And that was a lot of money right there. Not on top of, on top of my $10,000 downstairs, I had to give another, over $10,000. Sewer, that's $20,000. I can't keep doing this. And the people, I docked on their doors, I don't know why they're not here. They didn't give me their numbers and their phone numbers and everything, why they're not speaking up. And I, you know what, I can't, I can only talk to them. I can't bring them out here, you know. And with this cold thing, you know. So I'm speaking on my behalf. And Daven, this Capula, which is 30218 Davis, he couldn't make it tonight. He said he was gonna come, but he's got a babysitter. His wife works at night. I don't know if you know, she works at the jail. But just to get this on record, and every time that truck comes, and if I'm around, I'm gonna put a date on that whole block, and see what's going on. I can't, okay, let's say I've gone on vacation for a week, two weeks. It might not come in my house, but it's gonna stay in my sewer till I unplug it myself. And then all that gas is still gonna come through the floor, and I'm gonna have my basement smell like sewer. I mean, it's, I told everybody, they asked me, what'd you think? And I go, well, have them put those gates in and buy insurance, because that's all we can do right now. So maybe we can get the city, get some funds coming our way. I know all over towns that way. I understand that. I understand the roads are and everything. But a pothole, I can go around a pothole. I have no control of the sewer coming in. So if you guys can help me out there, and hopefully, I don't get no more. But right before this, it rained heavy. And then the next day, this went all, it come up, you know. So I can't believe it's still saying that it's, you know, it's, they're clear. I got a number, and I was gonna go down there and look at it. What am I looking at? I'm not a plumber. I'm looking at a little, like, going down a hole. I can't tell if it's low, high, plugged. I don't know what I'm looking at. So, you know, I've lived in this town all, all my life. I used to live on Front Street and had a rental there. I've never seen you here complaining or anything. But like I said, I can't stop this. And I need an answer. If somebody can give me an answer, I'll accept that. But I can't accept an answer saying, hey, it's not on our side. It's not on our side. When this was going on, I had the people with the water and sewer come down, and he was yelling over the top, and I'm not gonna say who the, it's your side, it's on your side, it's on your side. Well, you know what? Now it's on my side, because I had Eddie run a router, and an old pipe, it's gonna break after so long. And within seven years, all these seven people, except for one, I put new sewers. And this 204, they're just buying a rent. I felt sorry for them. They bothered, nobody, when I was bringing my carpet up, putting my pool table up on blocks, when we saw the sewer, it's two feet up on the stairway. Got there, the control of the TV was floating. Ross sewage. I called the insurance, they'd have nobody to send over here. So they gave me instructions how to clean it and everything, and they gave me some money for that. But nobody knows when that stuff's floating in your basement, how terrible it could be. It's like you come home and your house is on fire. Really? So I'm just gonna tell you right now, I'd like some answers from any of you guys. I don't know why they didn't inspect those houses. Just that, like I said, that gal, two days after she moved in, I know, three days, sewer. Where's the inspections on them?
Well, we will definitely get with them, the sewer department. We'll definitely reach out to them, and see what we can come up with, and see if we can find answers.
Yeah, just some answers, just so I can, if I could put another gate right there where it comes in from the sewer, I'd put one. The other thing is, I got some pictures here in here. Barry knows, I showed him. The last time this happened, I don't know when Jody put that nice gravel in the back, that was recycled.
Recycled asphalt?
Yes. They did that, and it was all smooth and everything and nice. Well, here comes my sewer, and every time that happens, somebody comes and puts dirt on top of it. Twice! I have pictures of that, too. If anybody wants to see that, I have them. I have the pictures of the buckets. And the first time they came in, and I did the manhole, which is just a little ways from mine, there was a bicycle down there, two tires, big balls. The kids have been in it. So are they locked in these things? Who knows? I'm just saying, it would have been, if they're opening that, and they're mostly kids, because what would they be doing? What fell down there, there's the lawsuit right there. And, you know, just, I'm just giving you guys what I brought to them.
Well, we'll get with the city manager, and have him try to come back, and hopefully we can get some answers back to you.
All right, Steve, I appreciate it. And I appreciate everybody listening.
Neil, if you could keep an eye on who's dumping the dirt, because public works has no record of anything.
Yes, I know.
And I called them and asked them. The other thing, I don't know what they found. I know that they ran the back truck, they ran a camera through the, through the line, found some trees, roots, other than that.
Yeah, yeah.
Didn't find anything. My thinking, and I'm not a plumber either, my thinking is, when they installed that line, the property on Miller Street, there was no housing. And so that line is the original line that they put in 1960. My thinking is that maybe the flow, they built Stagecoach Apartments on Miller, they built a bunch of houses.
Right.
And it all flows on that same line. And then maybe the flow's too much for that size of line.
Right.
You know, that or the line's settled. We don't have enough run to get to, get down that alley.
Okay. I do got another, I've been there, I've been there, lived there before you moved in across the street, D. And the Stagecoach Apartments were already there when I moved in.
Yeah.
Okay? And for the, I wouldn't have put all that down there if I wouldn't have known, you know, we'd have sewer problems. So, like I said, after I did this, I haven't had a lot. I mean, you know, there've been calls here and there, and I've seen them. But I'm thinking my backflow helped me. And they asked, they told me, my cousin and I said, check that out about every three months, open it up, and make sure that that gate's closed. There's no dirt or anything. So it stays that way, right? Well, Daven, because his didn't work, because there was that mud and that grease that gotten, apparently it got there once, and then it went back, and they didn't close on it. So I told him, I go, have you cleaned that before? And he goes, he's young. Me, when I moved in, I go, I told him, you gotta make sure, because the insurance low and we pay so much. After they come to you twice, you know insurances are, two, three accidents, you're gone. So I'm telling him that. Sure could help me out there. And I don't know why they're putting dirt.
I don't know either.
Why would anybody, and it's in two places. It's online, and the other one to replace theirs was Flora Jones' mom, with Chile's on Miller, the house behind me, basically that. And they put it there, too. So I got the pictures of that. When I went in there, got up in the morning, went out there, there wasn't even tracks. Nobody had even dove over. I have the pictures, so if anybody wants to see them.
Another thing, Neil, that's important to me, is that if those people would call.
I understand that.
Part of my job, not to fix the thing, but to get enough information.
Information, right.
And not receive any calls on that block.
I know.
And so that, that was mind boggling to me.
Me, too, D. I'm, yeah.
If it was my house, I'd be calling every day.
You know, you know, when I got these numbers, they did come to the door, and I asked them if they had a new sewer. Like I said, one of them told me, three days after they moved in. And I asked them when they replaced them, and they go, within the last four or five years. And I'm sure they put those backflows, too, because, you know, so, and the thing is, I could, I could tell them, but I can't, I can't make them drink the water. I'm, I'm done with sewer coming in my place, so I'm here. I should have come here seven years ago to get this on record. Maybe they could have done something, you know, different. But like I said, I'm here, and that's what's happening. And if anybody wants to see these pictures, send them to you. Give me a call, send them to you. This last time, like I said, there wasn't, the other thing is, when they opened up that thing and saw all those bikes and everything, I went to go get my camera, because I didn't have one of these at the time, for some reason. And they're gone. No pictures, no nothing. I asked, I asked the workers, I went, they, we don't know. It's like everything's a secret around there, and it might just be me.
All right. Well, definitely, I'll definitely look into it and see if we can get any answers.
Appreciate it. I appreciate it. Okay? Like I said, anybody needs pictures, I got it. Okay?
Thank you. Hi, how are you?
How are you?
I'm good. Haven't been here for a while. Between babysitting my granddaughter and who did stuff, but I just have a few things to say to commend the city council. One thing has been the change of the city manager. I did notice the change in snow removal. I know it's hard to think of snow right now, but even my street was cleaned, and I appreciate that. I would hope that during the time when there isn't snow, maybe look at some snow fences and a path, a prepared way of attacking that problem. I know last year, we had a lot of wind that made some unpredictable drifts, but maybe we can take that information and be more prepared for next year's snow. Also, I wanted to commend the police, city police, for their work on putting up portraits of the police officers, so the public can get to know them better. I think that's, that was a really good idea, and I really appreciated that as well. And I also wanted to commend the city council for their reaction to the coronavirus. I feel it wasn't all-out panic, and it wasn't, we don't care, let's do nothing. It seemed like a very middle-of-the-road approach, and I really appreciate the council going that way. As well as the police, that when somebody does do something wrong, they go and talk to them first, and get some understanding and some information out there, and not just arrest a bunch of people. I think that's the best response. So, I'm just saying, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in here in the hallway that wants to see? Okay. Now we'll move on down to item B, to the proclamation. The proclamation, 307 first. Whereas the city of, the Rollins City Council is committed to supporting the success and strength of our local and state economy, and encourages the efforts of our local business owners. And whereas local businesses are the backbone of our economy and are in, are in.
Intrigued.
Intrigued to the growth and longevity of our community. And whereas the strength of our local business is dependent on the support of the community, and whereas buying from local owned businesses not only supports the employees of that business, the money spent locally is used to hire other support businesses, such as suppliers, auto equipment dealers, and contractors. And whereas, all these factors together create what's called a qualifier effect, meaning that each dollar spent in a local store brings as much as $3.50 into the local economy. And whereas supporting local business supports critical infrastructure within our communities, through the generation of sales tax revenue, making our Wyoming communities a great place to live, work, and play. Now therefore, we are proclaiming that I, Mayor Stephen S. Nicholson, here have here proset my hand, and cause the sale of the city of Rollins, and we hereby declare June 2020 to be 307th first month, and encourage all citizens to live, love, and buy Wyoming. Now we'll move on down, council reports. First one is board of adjustments, which would be myself, I have nothing to report. The next one is COG, which is myself, and I have nothing to report. The next one is DVA Main Street, Councilwoman Smith, and she is not here tonight, but she did send in some items that are leave on her behalf. So the first item she has there is the downtown project day, May 30th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. They will be painting and cleaning up Kids Corner, picking up trash in the downtown, and doing some other small projects around the people. Come down and show your community pride while still socially distanced. At this time, they are planning on summer fest, July 10th and 11th, excited to have the pedal car derby for the second year, and other down the town activities. Rollins DVA slash Main Street continues to assist small businesses during these challenges, time of COVID-19. Stay tuned for downtown planning mania, starting Tuesday, June 2nd, through the summer. Okay? The next one we have here is the Rollins Planning Commission, Councilman Estenosa.
Yes, the Rollins Planning Commission is reviewing the Rollins master plan. We have to take a look at it early. And I believe the council is supposed to look at it semi-manually.
The next item is urban systems, Councilman Sanger.
Nothing new to report.
Okay. Now we'll move on down to the approval of the minutes, minutes of May 5th, 2020 special meeting. Councilman Sanger?
I move to approve the special meeting minutes of May 5th, 2020, as presented.
Okay. First and a second. Any questions in regards to that motion that was made? If not, Martin, would you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with six yays.
Now we'll move on down to the approval of the minutes of May 5th, 2020 regular meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes, May 5th, a special, oh, councilman, oh.
A regular.
Regular. Yeah, I didn't make that one. That one. I was here, but I don't know.
You were on the phone.
Yeah, I was on, I was on, yeah, okay. Anyway, I couldn't remember if I missed that one.
Any questions in regards to that motion? Martin, would you open online voting, please?
Okay. Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with six yays.
Now we'll move on down to approve the minutes of May 7th special meeting. Councilman Estenosa?
I move to approve the special meeting minutes of May 7th, 2020, as presented.
All right. All right.
We have a first and a second. Any questions, objections, that motion was made? Okay. Martin, would you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with six yays.
Now we'll move on down to correspondence, reports, and information. First item is apartment monthly reports. Does anybody have any questions with any of those? Okay. Item B is music in the park street closure. Do you want to use information on that, or wait?
Well, I mean, I can't, I didn't print it, so again, it's not my item. But I can at least report to you that council or city staff department has represented with the road closure last week at staff meeting, which they signed off on. And it starts the middle of June, and it, Walnut Street, up to 15th to Park Drive, will be closed for the vendors for Music in the Park. That's every Thursday, June, July, August 8th, I believe, is not gonna be closed. That's probably during Fair and Road Day.
August 6th.
August 6th, okay. And then the last Music in the Park is the following weekend, so.
Any questions in regards to that motion? Okay. Now we'll move on down to approve the agenda, and.
Mr. Mayor, they commission to approve.
I need to make a, a change to the agenda. I'll do the first one. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition to add allowing the city manager to submit a variance on Music in the Park, in case we have an issue when the time comes.
I'll say it, D.
Okay. So we have a first and a second on that. Any questions or objections to that motion? Martin, would you open online voting, please?
Okay, so I'm sorry, who made the motion? You did. And then councilmember Martinez seconded it?
Mm-hmm.
Online voting is open? Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with six yays.
Okay. Now we'll move on down to item A, to approve the payroll. Councilman Sanger?
I move to approve April 26th, 2020 through May 5th, 2020, payroll register in the amount of $212,382.02.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have councilwoman, councilwoman Barrow as the second. Any questions or objections to that motion? Martin, would you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with six yays.
All right, thank you. Now we'll move on down to item B, to approve the accounts payable. Councilman Sanger?
I move to approve the accounts payable register for the period of May 1st, 2020, to May 14th, 2020, in the amount of $137,000. to May fourteenth, twenty twenty in the amount of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars and four cents.
Okay. You have a first and a second?
Second.
Estenosa is good.
I couldn't hear her. This is awkward.
Last one, I can't talk there. Is there, was there any objections to the motion that was made? Okay, Martha, would you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with six yays.
Now we'll move on down to item C, a request, a land fee reduction waiver for one oh nine West Hugus Street. Any motion on that? Councilman Sagan.
Mr. Mayor, for the purpose of discussion, I would make a motion that the, uh, we give a land fee reduction waiver for one oh nine West Hugus Street.
Okay, can you do a second?
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Daniel, would you like to come fill us in?
Um, yeah, so this is a dangerous building, and the property owner is working to demo the prop, the, um, house and get rid of the two campers, so she's requesting a landfill fee waiver.
She's asking for the full amount, partial?
She is asking for the full amount. Um, Lou did the measurements, and based off of what his estimated tons are, um, it would, we're estimating the fees would be about three thousand five hundred dollars total.
Okay, has this cleaned the whole property up then, or is this just, I mean, I, I guess I don't.
Yes, she is planning to demo.
It's just like a bunch of crap there that, I mean.
Uh, so she's planning to demo the house, get rid of the camper trailers, and then she would grade the property once the house was torn down.
And so she's already committed to finishing, putting it to a level grading?
Yes.
I mean, that, that's like.
Yes, and she has a settlement agreement with the city of Rollins um, to move forward through the dangerous building process. She, her and Lou have worked out the dates that, um, she feels she can meet. Um, and we've been working with her on this. It's been a little bit now. I don't recall the first time that we tagged it, but, um, that is something that she is, God quotes. She's really, this is kind of the last piece she's waiting for. I talked to her today. Um, and she just wants to see what kind of waiver she can get from you guys to move forward to help with the cost of this. She is unlimited.
If she does not get a waiver, what, her plans, will she still be moving forward?
Um, as far as I know, that is the plan. I don't, honestly, we're, I told her today that I would like to see what you guys do, and then we would regroup tomorrow and go from there. So I would have to talk to her to get an official, what her plans are moving forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Martinez.
Mr. Mayor, I had an opportunity to go down and look at the property, and I, I can see us giving her a hand on the, on the house. I don't know what kind of foundation it has, if it has a concrete foundation. Uh, I also went to the back. There's awful lot of metal. There's a, a bed of a pickup that's laying there. There's a snow machine. There's a camping trailer. And then there's the main trailer that caught on fire with the windows broke. This is something that I've discussed, uh, for some time, and finally got to it, and I'm happy that they did. Uh, I just don't feel it's right that, this is something that came up during the nineteen seventy-five, when I introduced this program. I was doing it on my area, and, um, when the council called me in, they said, well, we're cleaning all these properties. They're selling them and making a profit. The city's having to pay the bill, and that wasn't right. So I agreed that we need to set up some, so they started doing this, um, putting liens and so forth. But my thinking is that we help her with the house, we charge her for the metal, and she could, uh, maybe make arrangements where she could make payment. We wouldn't turn on the water at all to anybody. That bill is paid. That's, that's my, my way of thinking. I don't know if anybody agrees or not.
So I do want to clarify too that typically, and again, it's your pleasure, but we would ask that she sort it, like anybody else that goes to the landfill. So metal is no charge item becau, and the reason that the city, um, is my understanding, we don't charge it because we recoup that money and we get paid for it by the, um, hauler that salvages that. So we would require that she separate. So if it's something that would go in the free area, then, because that's the other thing. If she doesn't separate, our employees have to, and we do have in the fee schedule that if you choose not to separate, we can charge you a two hundred and fifty dollar sorting fee. Um, the other part of that too is, in our municipal code, um, it allows for you guys to give landfill fee waivers up to five thousand dollars with, in that waiver, so it actually is charged to that person until, and then we don't credit them whatever you guys approve until they have a passing final inspection on that dangerous property, so that we can close that file out and we know, okay, we gave you this waiver, and in return, we're getting a property that's now cleaned up and taken care of.
I understand what you're saying. Two years back, I was left with a mobile home on my property. I didn't ask for a waiver, so maybe that would have been changed. Maybe they would have gave me one, I don't know. I paid eight or nine hundred dollars to haul that thing to the landfill, because they said that it's metal, we got to take it apart. There's a frame underneath, blah, blah, blah. There's no difference than this. See what I'm saying? I'm just saying that there should be a, maybe split the cost, uh, fifty-fifty? Maybe that's a suggestion, I don't know.
And that's completely up to this, you guys, the city council.
You made the original first motion. If you don't want to amend your motion with a dollar amount, then we're seconding it.
Well, I have trouble putting a dollar amount when I don't know exactly what it, what you think it's going to cost to send that.
Thirty-five hundred.
She said thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred?
So you could, it's up to you, you could do half not to exceed thirty-five hundred for the total, or, or whatever dollar amount you'd like to put in there. Or, or at all, or half.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Uh, I, I would be, I would be willing to amend my motion to read that, uh, the fee would be fifteen hundred dollars, ha, or half of what, but, uh, we're going to charge her, do it, for us to do it.
So, so your amendment, your amendment would be to cover half, half of the thirty-five hundred?
Exactly.
And we are not demoing this property?
No, they're doing it.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I, I realize that.
Okay.
But we're charging for the fee to get into the landfill. And, and so somebody out of, we just don't do this for free, because then the taxpayers are paying for one person to clean up her property. And, and we did that once and it didn't work. I was, I was called in because I was doing that. And they said, look, it isn't right that, and I know, uh, of people that, and it made up, made that, made that ward look a lot better. We took down about fifteen buildings, we cleaned them up. I had one gentleman say, well, you didn't do nothing for me, and I said, yeah, we cleaned your property and you sold it for twenty-five thousand. We didn't get, the city didn't get anything. So we, the, the taxpayer didn't get anything back. So my take is that if we split it with her, or we're working with her, we want it cleaned. Uh, but, and, and then we set it up where she could make some small payments until it's paid for. And it's paid for, we turn on the water. That's, that's my take. I don't know if it's a good idea or a bad one, but.
So, so to clarify, your amendment to your motion would be to cover half of the thirty-five hundred dollars, which is seventeen fifty?
Yes.
Not to exceed that.
Not to exceed seventeen fifty?
Is that correct?
Or not to exceed half?
Yeah, not to exceed half.
So if the amount comes out to be more than thirty-five hundred, it's not to exceed half of whatever the amount, the total is? Am I understanding that correctly? Because one of them is a set amount of seventeen fifty, and the other one's a variable amount.
So yeah, so I guess however you'd like to put the motion, half of the thirty-five hundred, or half of whatever the actual amount is? The actual fee is. Which one would you like it?
Okay, I amended again to read that we, that whoever, uh, whatever the cost is, that the person would have to pay, um, half of whatever it's going to cost.
I'll get the final letter.
Get it to the landfill.
I'll second.
Okay, so first and second, what do you have?
I do, I do have a question. So she's, she's going to maintain the property, once, when she's done, once it's leveled and everything. What is her intent?
I do not know. I would have to talk to her. I'm not sure.
We don't know if her intent is then to sell that property?
Correct. I don't know at this time.
And then we got to remember that.
I, I don't even know if she knows. I think she's still kind of looking at her options and, right, just.
I, I, I don't, I don't know this lady, but I can tell you that, that property that I've owned in the past, uh, two lots, twenty-one thousand dollars. So she cleans it up, we give her this break, taxpayer gets zero, and she gets a nice clean piece of property to sell for twenty-five, and then there's three lots there. So you're probably talking a lot more, and then today's cost is even higher. So I think it's a fair deal, I really do, and, and then we can work with her so she can make arrangements to make payments. That's what she wants to do.
It's a couple of questions. So the way that this, because if I understood what you said, right? She, so let's just say that this went through. She's going to go out, we're going to done everything, she's going to pay it all off, and then let's say it was the half. So then we would say, okay, well, you now have a credit option for, let's just say it's seventeen fifty, right? And then she's going to go back, and she's going to pay all of that, go back, level the dirt, and then when it's at that point where she promised it would be, and we would credit back that landfill fee, or would it all just happen immediately?
So she will.
Because I kind of feel like, in other words, I feel like it's a if then, if we do this, then in response, she's agreeing to do this, so.
So she, when she goes to the landfill, all, everything will be weighed, everything will be charged for. Once Lou, as the building official, goes over there and says, this is now a safe condition, we can take it off the dangerous building, um, list or status, and she passes that final, then what we will do at that point is credit her whatever you guys approved today. So if that's the half, then at that point, she would get that because she's got the final passing inspection, and then she would pay whatever.
Okay, so once, once it's basically completed, then we, okay.
Correct.
Another, another question, there's another, another building in the back. There's a garage back there, and it's got a sticker on it also. Is that, is that up for grabs too, to tear down?
I would have to double check on that.
It's not a bad building. It's not as bad as the house, but it's sitting back there with a, an orange tag, and I don't know why they tagged it.
Right, but I didn't know that's, I don't know if that's, they're just the house.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Councilman.
I just had, I was just going to switch over to Leo for a minute.
Okay.
So I, I know we want to do this little odd bill as far as giving people credit, and at that time, the situations were different. So this one would fall within that appropriate, I mean, is this what that was intended for, like as far as the legal?
Government should not extend credit. It's constitutionally, um, you should not extend credit. However, in situations where, uh, you, your local governments have accounts such as water and sewers, it's customary for them to open up a water or sewer account and bill accordingly. Where the city would get into issues is if, um, you set forth and you knew someone you were going to enter into an agreement for twenty thousand dollars, and you knew that wouldn't be able to pay the twenty thousand dollars, and you still proceeded forward.
You know.
Yeah, if this is, um, you're weighing the extension of credit to the private citizen against cleaning up a property in the city of Rollins that's been declared a dangerous building. And if you don't get it, work with the, um, citizen, then the city steps in, and the city's spending the funds to clean it up, and then personnel, and then you're dealing with.
You do it all, that's the, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I have one.
Okay, what?
We have the capacity to have her make payments if she can afford the other?
Uh, we do. That, I actually, that was what I asked Amy really fast when you guys at first brought that up. So she would, do work with finance to set up a payment fund on that, and I think it's, I, she does like an agreement saying she'd pay X amount and.
Oh, okay.
I guess my only concern would be is, um, the amendment to the motion was half of the cost. What worries me is we didn't put a, a twelve win on the cost, so if for some reason that back house was added to it, or some unforeseen.
That's what I was asking.
And it wound up being ten or twelve or fifteen thousand dollars, and by this motion, we'd be on the hook for half of that.
Your, your ordinance states you can only go up to five thousand dollars.
Right, okay.
That's hard to hear.
Okay, so with that in mind, okay.
And I'm not trying to get people to not want to do this. I, I really do. I, I just don't think it's fair that taxpayers, that's what I was told several years ago when we started this program, um, that it's fair that the taxpayers are paying for people to clean up their properties, and then they turn around and sell them, and the city doesn't recoup the cost of anything. So that's my take.
And you, uh, Chair, uh, Mayor, Honorable Mayor, I would just echo those concerns from, uh, council member Martinez. The Dangerous Building Fund was created through the sale of municipal lots. Uh, we have, um, subsequently been, um, thinning those lots out. We are currently landlocked in the middle of BLM and state lands, uh, with our opportunity to gain more lots simply, uh, limited. So I, I think it would be prudent for the council to set a maximum amount, even though the council has set an outside limit of five thousand dollars. Um, that five thousand dollars would also include if you had to do some, a large abatement downtown, or a large abatement in an industrial area. Um, it, it provided you some leeway in that, whereas this is one residential unit in the city of Rollins, and is that really fair to, to have five thousand dollars on this one lot? And then not have the money to replenish the account and help others, uh, that may need it down the road?
That's true, and that's the, the other thing, is that money goes into that account, into the building account, to be used to help other people that are, having the same problem, um.
Yeah, that fund, um, serves as an emergency, uh, uh, abatement for home, for people who, their home freezes in the winter or their landlord doesn't provide them with heat, and they don't have the funds to rent a hotel for the, um, there's a fire in the, in the middle of winter. It allows our building official the opportunity to contact the local hotel and give them a couple of days so that their family, so they're not displaced and homeless, so.
Yeah, the, the other side of the coin is we, we use, we use this project to me, this dangerous building is to help the community, not for us to make a lot of money, but to put some money aside to help other people that need help. We helped one the other day, was going to build a daycare center. I thought that was a great move. They've cleaned up that building. It's looking real nice. Uh, I think it's going to be a plus for the downtown area. Uh, so it did its job. That program's working. Getting money into the program's a little tough, but.
So I, I guess I would feel a compliment of Barry, that if the motion.
Had a limit.
Had a limit to it. Instead of, instead of having it left open, instead of just.
But we're below the limit, so we, we are, but it could go above.
Because of that other building.
Yes.
Right.
And I don't know, I guess those are the questions I'd be asking the, uh, Lou would, would be, what's the problem with that garage? I mean, it's not falling down. It looks pretty sturdy. It has a garage door. It's, I'm not sure if that's a building that, that they need to knock down.
Right, so I mean, so to cover us, I mean, I, I think the motion needs to read, you know.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed a total cost of like.
Five thousand. That's a total.
Seventeen fifty.
Wouldn't you want to go to the not to exceed five thousand?
Well, that's what Amy was just talking about. By doing that, we're giving a residential person a max amount. It's a lot of money.
Oh, no, we don't want to do that.
Right.
I, I wanted to split it.
Right.
So then not to exceed.
So if we put in there not to exceed that thirty-five hundred, and we'll cover half up to that thirty-five hundred.
I would make that motion then.
Okay.
Okay, so I have.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
Move to approve a landfill waiver up to half of the landfill cost, not to exceed one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for one oh nine West Hugus Street.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second. Yeah, I'll kill.
Yeah.
Well, because we kind of changed, I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Mr. Mayor, point of order, uh, does that mean that, uh, say we're charging her seventeen hundred, but that the city comes to us and says, well, that other building's got to go too?
Then they'd have to come and ask for more for, if a win above.
They can come back to us.
Yes.
I want to make sure that she can come back to us, so we're working with this person. I want to work with this person too. It's, it's a plus to get that cleaned.
Okay. Any questions or objections to the motion that was made?
Which one?
Okay, Martha would open online voting, please. Okay, Marla will open her line voting.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle.
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with six yeas.
All right, thank you. I will move on back, item D, a resolution admitting the Rawlins Police Department civil service. Will you motion please?
No, it should be this one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Counselor, Mayor?
I move to accept the suggested language additions in Chapter Two, classification of employment, section twenty-four, certification and education compensation.
Honorable Mayor, Council, the Rawlins Police Department has been working on recruitment and retention. It is becoming increasingly difficult to recruit and retain quality personnel with the current employee grade pay schedule and grading system as adopted by City Council. The Rawlins Police Department has encouraged its employees to participate in advanced training and education, which would be beneficial to the city, Rawlins and the citizens who we serve. The Rawlins Police Department has developed a certification and education compensation policy in the Rawlins Police Department Civil Service Rules that were approved by the Civil Service Commission members on April fifteenth, twenty twenty, uh, at the Civil Service Commission meeting. It is intended to formally establish criteria by which compensation, compensation for certifications and education may be uniformly applied. The purpose of this policy provides for uniform standards, practice, and procedure. This policy is subject to and contingent upon the Rawlins City Council's annual budget approval, which is the funding mechanism, mechanism on these instances, thank you.
Any questions for, for that?
Yes. Mayor, so does this lock us into base, uh, based upon our budget, does it lock us into compensation for those certifications and education?
As long as it's approved, from my understanding, through the budget process each year that we, we support this.
Right. Any other questions? Marla?
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with six yeas.
Any more? Now we'll move on down to a resolution, Bureau of Justice Assistance Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant, twenty twenty. Will you motion, Counselor?
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the submission of a Bureau of Justice Assistance Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget cycle in the amount of fifteen hundred and eighty-seven dollars and sixty cents to assist in the cost of new and replacement vests for sworn Rawlins Police Department officers.
Honorable Mayor, Council, I've been coming up here, I don't know, for, it seems like the last seven years, every year we put in for this, the Bureau of Justice Bulletproof Vest Partnership, um, grant through, basically it was created by Congress many years ago, and it, it just helps with the purchase of our bulletproof vests. Um, it pays for fifty percent, basically, of our, our vest purchases, and every five years, we have to buy a new one, um, for each of our officers, and then also, obviously, for our new recruits, they have to get new vests, so it just helps offset that money, um, for that purchase.
These are a hundred percent grants, that correct?
Fifty percent. They've always been fifty percent, we pay fifty percent, they.
Fifty fifty?
Yeah.
Okay.
Have you always, always received it?
Oh, uh, yes, we've been, I haven't been denied, been denied yet, and in fact, we're still working on last year's bulletproof vest grant, purchasing, um, cause we just, like, we got hired two new people, um, Monday, so.
Congratulations.
So we're gonna be purchasing them.
Fifteen eighty-seven.
Okay. Fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred, okay.
More questions for? Marla will open her line voting.
Counselor. Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with six yeas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on down to item F, an ordinance first reading of fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty-one. Counselor, second?
I move to approve on first reading and waive the reading of the ordinance adopting, adopting the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget as presented.
I'll second that.
Do we have a first and a second? Destin, is there anything you'd like to say?
Open it to the council for questions, amendments, what else?
Mr. Mayor, I would like. Okay, so, um, as part of this COVID stuff with the CARES Act that just passed. Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm not.
Oh, you're not there yet.
I'm just talking at the moment.
Okay.
We are going to be on, I'm going to be on seventy-five, seventy-six, uh, talking about nonprofits, so that, that's where I'll be. Um, so with the CARES Act, the, the Rawlins Airport, uh, receives twenty thousand dollars for, uh, for the CARES Act, basically, grant money, and so my theory is there, one of the things that that can be used for is like operational stuff, um, payroll things, we don't need to do that, but we can use it for operational. So because that money was intended to support and bolster local communities and economies, what I, what I would argue is, let's, I believe the airport will be fine, let's let that money support the airport, and instead of the city just for this year, I understand, I'm only talking in a one-year plan, instead of the city dominating, uh, looks like, well, I was thinking twenty, but it looks like we budgeted twenty-five, what I'd like to do is reallocate that money back into some of these other nonprofits to bolster some more of our community, because the CARES grant is already bolstering that airport. So I would like to use that, instead of just taking that money and saying, well, we'll put it towards something, I would like to put it back into the community, so to speak. Um, so what I, what I was thinking is, I would like to see about doing, um, just taking ten thousand of that, putting it into a savings account with, uh, as a starter fee for a dog park, where it doesn't care where, whether it's ponds or not, right now, I'm not talking about where, I'm just talking about allocating, say, ten thousand of this, put it aside, we would have a seed plant for some kind of a dog park down the road. Um, I would propose to take at least another five thousand, and, um, we were at with the council, where's my council? Is add five thousand of that to the counseling center? And then in our last workshop, we had talked about having the G V council add a little bit more money to the counseling center, just as a general discussion. So I, I would ask for the five thousand to go there, and then I would challenge this council to add a couple of more thousand to that, um, just so that they had a little extra resources here in town for that. Um, then that would leave a little bit left over, which I would, I would open and entertain, I mean, if there's some, you know, if we wanna steal another thousand to some of these other places, or some to the scene, or some, I mean, in other words, I would ask for everybody else's thoughts were on some of the other nonprofits or other community support for that. Well, we, we don't have to decide, tonight is first reading, we don't have to come to terms with this to be second. If nothing else, you guys all have a seed plant to think about this, and think about some ideas where maybe you could see our community being supported by this, and open it up for ideas, I mean, that's, that's what I wanted to share with you.
Seemed like to me, and I, I was on the telephone last meeting, so it made it hard for me to understand what we have was going on, but having said that, um, my thinking was that I wanted to meet the Carbon County Counseling halfway. They asked for thirty thousand dollars, and that we'd go to fifteen, that's one. Uh, I don't support laying ten thousand dollars on the side for a dog run. Uh, I would, uh, leave, uh, I was gonna change the pet partners, but I don't have to, if we have this money that you're talking about, we'd leave pet partners the way it is. I'm happy with what you guys gave them, and so that would work, but I have a problem with this dog run thing, I just, uh, I see it working on certain areas of town, I don't see people coming all the way across town to, just to run.
People are driving to Saratoga to go to the dog park from Rawlins.
A few are, a few are, but we're talking about eight thousand people. How many people are running?
Well, so we're in the weeds, but we'll, we'll haggle.
But that's just a debate, but anyway, that's just, you asked, you asked for my thought of what I was thinking about during the week, and my, and that was that I believe that we should meet Carbon County Counseling halfway, uh, based on what I've heard on the, uh, on the radio, the TV, about mental health is climbing pretty fast because of this virus, people being enclosed, uh, a lot of problems. That's the one thing, the other thing is that, uh, uh, like I say, I, I, I was gonna try to change pet partners if there was no money being available, I was gonna try to change, I don't need to do that, we'll leave them the same, I'd be happy with that.
Well, I, I would, so I would expand, so I, I agree with the bar, I would like to see the council put fifteen, and then I would argue, take another five from this, and then let's make it twenty.
So, so my take on this is if, if the airport board does not want for twenty-five thousand.
Do not use the words do not want.
Okay, are, are we allowed to not take it this year? Then my thought would be is to take that twenty-five thousand dollars and divide it evenly amongst all the nonprofits that has asked for money, to make it fair. I don't feel it's fair to single out certain ones and give them a better boost than the others. I feel if we're gonna have extra funds to give out, all of them should equally share in that condition.
And I, my biggest thing is I just want it to the community.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would agree with what you just said, except that, uh, if we divided that up to all the nonprofits, that would mean that we never reached the halfway mark for Carbon County Counseling. So, you know, so that's where I'm at, I understand.
But I don't know if that's our goal.
That's my goal, I guess, yeah.
Right, and I just think if, if we have some extra monies, I think sort of like, all of them, we read some of that. That's my thoughts, and we don't have to go down.
And, and again, yes, everybody be thinking about this, right, I, I think in our next meeting, we need to have some good, open discussion on this, but.
City manager?
Finance director? Dog park, let's put that on the ten-year plan. Because when we start shifting money into separate accounts for one particular purpose, we end up with a hundred bank accounts, because I can do that for so many things.
Okay.
That is the intent of that ten-year plan that I presented to you guys, was to get those projects that you guys want, and that would be a capital-type project in there, let's plan for it, let's get the money together and move forward. So instead of putting seed money down to ten thousand, let's do some research on it, figure out what our cost will be, and then plan out, okay, in two years, we can have, say, say it's twenty thousand, just whatever, number. Um, over the next couple of years, we can plan ahead, and have that twenty thousand, wait, we do the project. Uh, when we start putting restricted funds into separate bank accounts, we literally end up with hundreds of bank accounts, and we don't know what's supposed to be where. We need to utilize the new planning tools and new implementing to the fullest extent. That's how we get these projects done efficiently.
I see.
So, except not to, I'm not saying that is not a worthy project, I just think we need to look at.
It's how we do best, yes.
Correct, so let's utilize our planning tools to do those things, so where you guys went after that, I don't know. So if you guys have, if, if you guys want to, uh, take this back home, look at it, um, and think about what you guys wanna do with these numbers. It, it's much easier if I can come in and say, this is the number we want in this individual account. If you want twenty thousand in counseling center, fine, I'll make a note. Um, if you wanna take the airport board down to zero for one year, I can do so. Um, I can then take and adjust the budget, because I do have to present this council with a balanced budget. So if we add or subtract in, I then have to do some other work to get that ba- uh, budget balanced. So more so, instead of shifting things around, tell me what you want in those areas, and then I will make the adjustments as needed. Is that fair, and all that?
I, I, I was just thinking, uh, finance director, that, uh, that we wanted to get this, I thought we'd solve this tonight, cause you're, aren't you on a time limit, get this budget back to us to before June first is.
Yeah, so this is reading one, um, the public hearing and second reading will be.
Second reading, public hearing is twenty-four hours before the third reading, within the twenty-four hours of the third reading.
Yeah, I'm sorry, first reading. Um, so we're on the, we're on the time lines, we're good, um, as long as we're passing this along. We cannot have postponements, or we won't hit that by, we'd have to have a special meeting then in June.
Sounds like we're not that far away from each other anyway.
No, we're, we're really not, um, and we can make those adjustments next reading. Um, you guys have heard what everybody had to say, everybody knows what page everybody's on. If you guys can start thinking about some numbers, we present those next time, I can get them, get them where we need to be.
So as it stands right now, we have a motion for it to approve, but we're having a first reading as expected.
We can, we can do that.
I'm gonna have him open his session. Any other questions? Okay, with that being said, Marla will open her line voting.
Yes.
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with six yeas.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll move on down to item nine, exact session, will you get a motion? Oh, if, all right, item G, I got an item G.
I don't have it in there.
I don't have one either, okay. I need to get a motion to.
So Sherry, I think you need, Sherry and TV. I don't have the ability to do it on the.
So we need to get, have a motion to allow the city manager to submit a substitute on a variance to music.
Okay, who made the motion?
I'll make the motion. Counselor, first, second?
Okay.
Any discussion?
This is just, so this is just like everything else, this is, we're just saying, we're gonna do music in the park, and this is how we're gonna do it, so.
Well, if something comes up, and we, cause we're gonna, right now, it's planned to do it, but if something comes up with the COVID nineteen restrictions, this allows Destin to take action to adjust or whatever.
So. So, yeah, right now, the gathering number is twenty-five. Um, we have our first concert scheduled for June eighteenth, and the next month, I don't know what's coming. Um, I don't think anybody does at this point, we're, we're trying to follow the trends and figure out what's going on, is that fair to say? Um, as far as how we're gonna open this back up, to what extent we will. It is my opinion, and counsel can correct me if I'm wrong, music in the park is a big piece of this community. Um, it's what people want, people go out, hang out, they do things, it's a big part of what we do here. Um, all I'm asking is counsel's permission that as we get closer, if these restrictions are not lifting, I can request a variance.
Okay.
Um, I don't know.
That's what I meant, I don't know what I said.
So I don't know what the variance will be at this point, and I'll wait, but I just need to make sure this council's on board with me going forward with this, to ensure we can carry forward with our musical parks to some degree. Because we start making contracts early in the year to get these bands booked, we have money invested. But again, it's also a big part of this community, so therefore I don't wanna lose one of the big things we do throughout the course of the nice weather, especially after the winter we had, so that's all I'm asking, is this council allow me to put that variance forward. It would be something I would work with legal counsel on to make sure we're not crossing certain lines and different things like that. But just so we can keep it going to some extent.
Any questions?
I do. So is it a variance submitted to the Carbon County Health Officer?
No, it gives me the authorization, it gives me as city manager the authorization to submit one on behalf of the city for our music in the parks.
It does go to us?
It will go to them, but it gives me authorization to submit that to them.
Okay.
Any questions?
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Councilmember Durst?
Yes.
Councilman, uh, Vice Mayor Sanger?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Wells?
Epstein.
And Councilmember Espinoza, okay. Motion carries with five yeas and Councilmember Wells abstaining.
Now we'll move on down to item nine, executive session, are you getting a motion?
I move to go into executive session at eight thirty-nine per Wyoming statute sixteen four four oh five to consider the appointment, employment right to practice or dismissal of a public officer, professional person or employee or to hear complaints or charges brought against an employee, professional person or officer unless the employee, professional person or officer requests a public hearing. The governing body may exclude from any public or private hearing during the examination of a witness, any or all other witnesses in the matter being investigated. Following the hearing or executive session, the governing body may deliberate on its decision in executive session to consider or receive any information classified as confidential, confidential by law.
I'll give you a second.
Second.
First and a second, any questions or objections to that motion that was made? Martin will open on my vote please.
I'm sorry. Um, online voting is closed and the motion carries with six yeas.
Okay, we are in executive session.